Okay, I'd like to call this Municipal Planning Commission meeting to order. The Municipal Planning Commission is conducting this meeting in person and via conference call in accordance with the Municipal Government Act, Section 199. Council chambers is now open for public attendance in person, however, members may still join meetings remotely using our current teleconferences conferencing process. As per county policy 7.13, members of the public are not permitted to speak unless the commission agrees to hear from them. If the commission agrees to allow the public to speak, the chair will call upon specific individuals at that time. Please note that this is, this call is being recorded and will be uploaded to our website and/or social media. For any individuals using the conference call line, we ask that you mute your phone to eliminate background noise. Everyone has a right to be present at the Municipal Planning Commission meetings. Any attendees that are considered disruptive to the progression of this meeting may be removed at the discretion of the chair as per Municipal Government Act, Section 198. We thank you for your cooperation and understanding. As Member Link is calling in, I will call at this time, take a roll call vote. Member Eichert is here. Member Bigger.
Here.
Member Claussen.
Here.
Member Kester.
Here.
Member Link.
Good morning.
Member Laprise.
I'm here.
Member Lauriston.
Here.
Perfect, thank you. We have an agenda, is there any additions, deletions?
None from administration.
Commission wishes?
I'll move the adoption of the agenda.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Bigger. Any discussion? All in favor? Or I guess we'll do this in the negative, so if you have, I'll, if I have, hear no negative votes, then we'll consider it passed. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that is passed. The adoption of the unapproved minutes from February 8th, 2022. Um, sorry, sorry, Member Kester, thank you. Any opposition?
Hearing none, that is deemed passed.
We will now go on to development permit applications. We'll start with DP 2022-002. And as there's new members present for these applications for solar and for wind, even though we cannot make any changes, I think we should probably hear this through just to see how, just to see how the process works. So take it away Suzanne.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, again, thank you.
Okay, so I will be presenting all of the development permit applications this morning. This application is for a solar facility, and if we go to Appendix A on page 18 of the agenda package, we'll see the location plan. It is located approximately 3.5 miles north of Glacion. And on the same page, we have the circulation map. We circulated to surrounding landowners within two miles. There were no responses received. We also circulated to internal staff. We had some comments back. One from the manager of operations, who said they need an approach and an access and work agreement, as well as a road use agreement to facilitate construction, which will include providing dust control to residents along the construction hall route. The senior police officer said that temporary speed limit signs could be a condition of the DP, but they can't look like a regulatory sign, and they would be unenforceable by the county because the speed limit change would not have been approved by council. The deputy regional fire chief noted that the ERP has contained a reference to the town of Strathmore Fire Services, so the applicant consulted with the deputy regional fire chief and amended the emergency response plan. The community services coordinator reviewed the landscaping portion of the construction management plan and approved the landscaping details that were provided. Excuse me. I circulated to agencies as well. We didn't get any response from the AUC, the Alberta Utilities Commission. Alberta Environment and Parks said that they had already provided their comments on this project regarding wildlife and wildlife habitat, and that the report has been filed with the AUC and is in the public record. The WID had entered into a proximity agreement and a crossing agreement for the existing WID infrastructure. If we go to page 20 in the agenda package, we can see the proposed solar array layout. There are three residences that are nearby. We go down to page 21, have circulate, circled them on an aerial photo. The closest being the landowner, which is hosting the project, and the project is located on the parcel that has the red tint. Pages 22 and 23 of the agenda package show the specific distances to each landowner that is nearby. And then it also shows the green area along the parcel boundary, and that's the proposed landscape buffer. On page 24, we see the proposed haul route. So heading east off of Highway 1 on roads, township roads 230 and 224, and then north and south to the subject parcel on Range Road 225. If we go down to page 24 on the bottom, you can see the solar array sample, a side view. The applicant has, due to concerns regarding potential construction noise associated with pounded piles, the applicant is amenable to utilizing screw piles for the entire project, which are considerably less noisy during installation, because they are screwed into the ground rather than pounded. Market forces and pricing may, would still impact the final pile installation procurement decision, but the expectation is that vehicle piles would be used. And if the situation dictates to use the pounded piles, the applicant has agreed to construct construction schedule on 7:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., a maximum of six consecutive days, with a minimum of 24 hours before the subsequent next day period commences. So some considerations, the applicant, application does align with the relevant AUC decision and county planning documents, and the specific use regulations of the LUB, which talks about solar facilities. Measures have been taken to mitigate potential impacts to surrounding landowners during the construction phase of the development, and no objections were raised from surrounding landowners. On pages 10 and 11 of the agenda package, you will see staff's recommendation, and it is that MPC approves the solar facility, subject to the conditions as noted. And I will just highlight a couple of the conditions. So condition number eight, we're asking that biweekly construction updates to Wheatland County and the adjacent landowners be submitted. Condition nine, if pounded piles are utilized for the project, we've specified those specific time periods and consecutive days when they can do the installation. Condition 11, prior to commencing construction, the applicant must enter into a road use agreement, which includes the installation of dust control in front of the residential areas. And condition 12, that the applicant is to install temporary speed limit signage of 50 kilometers per hour or less. And prior to construction of the facility, a guaranteed security must be provided to ensure the landscaping is maintained for one year. Page 16 has the standard three options for MPC to consider, and that is to approve or to not accept staff's recommendation, or to provide an alternative recommendation. And that concludes my presentation, please let me know if you have questions.
Thank you Suzanne, that was an absolutely excellent report.
Thank you.
I think everything has been, I really appreciate the amount of work that you did for this, so. MPC's wishes?
I just have a quick question, if you don't mind. It's Shannon Laprise. I noticed in there, there's some talk about noise impact, and I just wanted to learn what kind of mitigation would look like, and what kind of noise we're talking about? Is there a humming from these inverter transformer units, or what kind of noise is it?
Yeah, once this facility is operational, I believe it's a humming noise, and that is all taken into consideration with the noise study that they did as part of their AUC application, and that they had to comply with Rule 12. And apparently, they, they did comply with that rule for the operational phase.
Okay. Okay. And I just also want to confirm one other thing. So on, on the picture of the routes that the trucks will be taking during construction, it shows if they're coming from the south or the east, they'll come in on, I don't have it in front of me, but in the wording on page, just a second here. Page nine, the wording says they're going to turn north on Range Road 225 and go directly north. So I just want to, I don't think that is a good route, I think the one in the picture is a better route. So I just want to make sure that that's.
Yeah, I actually did notice that too, that that wording came from the construction management plan, but I think that it was, it's meant to be to go east off of Highway 1 and then turn north onto 225.
Yeah. Turning north at that location, you're right on a curve, and there's a farm right on that corner, that I don't know if they've been consulted. I think that would be, the other route would be better, the one in the picture.
Okay, so if, when I approve this, if it's approved, then this construction management plan that's depicted in the, in the picture is what we would like to see as the approved plan.
Yes, yep.
EES Commissioner Bigger?
I have a question with, there's quite a few solar farms coming up. What is the, what's the procedure with AUC on public hearing? Like, we have it so that when a development is coming, we have a one mile radius, sometimes two mile radius. What is the AUC's procedure on, on who's notified and who gets to, and is, is the Wheatland County actually notified at the same time?
Yes, we are notified. They do have a participant engagement program that they have to follow, and Wheatland County is notified and, and inquired if we want to have any comments, or, so I don't know exactly what their radius is that they have to notify, but yes, we are one of the, the parties that are notified and the stakeholders.
And so you get to engage in the public hearing also?
I don't know if it's a public hearing, actually, or if you just submit your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kester?
Yeah, further to Shannon's. Those roads over there, they're just simple gravel roads. There's a, there's a, there's a chance for us to make a circular road that can only go one way. So the trucks aren't passing each other on the road, they come in one way, leave the other? Is that something you think might be? If we're going to approve the whole, that road, we could have them come in off of the better approach and leave. If we have two trucks meeting at that one corner on the curve, I'm thinking people turning off, going to Glacion, that's where they like to speed up and get going again. So, I don't know, just a thought, it's, you're more familiar with that road than I am.
Yeah. I, I kind of thought that in the construction phase, there'd be construction vehicles coming in in the morning, and then, I don't know, are they coming and going all day long? Honestly, I don't know.
I'm thinking there'd be vehicles hauling stuff in too, that'd be loaded. So there'd be bigger vehicles, I'm thinking, because there's a lot of panels coming in. And those trucks got to leave too.
Mm-hmm.
I, I agree with the 50 clicks, it should keep the dust down, for sure.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And the safety, but we get these two trucks passing at the same spot. They got to pass someplace if they're going.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea, yeah.
And if the road's a little wet.
Yeah.
You don't want them driving on the shoulders.
Exactly.
It's your, your call, I'll support whatever you think.
Yeah.
Or leave it up to the call of Public Works if they want to make it a safety issue. I don't know, ask Matt if that's something that's appropriate, or should we put it in the conditions?
Hmm, just looking at the map here.
Would that fit into the road use agreement? Like, and that would, can be, I, like, just let me finish my thought here, it may never come back to me. When we enter into a road use agreement, the, the contractor and the county are both involved in that, so therefore, we could just have the county bring up these issues, and if it's not going to be an issue for the, like, after everybody hashes it out, it's not going to be an issue, then we should be okay, right? So, so we can just, I think we can just leave it as part of the road use agreement and let, let the contractor and the county hash it out.
Yeah, because it says 11A, the road use agreement shall include but not limited to provisions for dust control. So it can include anything that Public Works can see arising issues.
Mm-hmm. I'm happy with that, if, you know, I think Public Works are the ones to decide whether this is an issue that needs to be addressed or not, so I would leave it in their capable hands, but.
I'm still waiting on MPC's wishes.
I'll move that council approve DP 2022-002 for a solar facility, given it complies with the relevant AUC decision, subject to the conditions outlined in the package.
Thank you Commissioner Laprise. Hearing none, I deem that passed. We will move on to 2.2, DP 2022-008.
Thank you. This application is for a variance for an existing shed. Page 29 of the agenda package shows the location plan within the community of Speargrass, and also the circulation area. We circulated to adjacent landowners plus one. It looks like a lot, it just took in the golf course, so it shows like we circulated to a lot. It was adjacent landowners plus one. We also circulated to the Speargrass Community Association. We didn't receive any comments, and we circulated internally, and we had no concerns from internal staff. On page 30, we have the RPR that was submitted for compliance, and the review identified this shed that was 1.06 meters from the side property line, and the required setback is 1.22 meters. So the shed is less than 100 square feet, so typically would not require a development permit if only it met the setback. If we go down to page 32 and 33, we can see some photos of the shed in relation to the property line. Some considerations, the proposal meets the criteria listed in the land use bylaw, 4.3 regarding variances, as it should not have a negative impact on surrounding landowners. Directly adjacent to the shed, there is no structure, it is in the yard area. There is no concern for raise from surrounding landowners, and no concerns for raise from the peer review, including the deputy regional fire chief. So on page 25, staff's recommendation is that Municipal Planning Commission approves this DP for the variance for the existing shed, subject to the conditions as noted. And MPC has the standard three options, which are found on page 27. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you Suzanne. MPC's wishes?
I move that MCP approves DP 2022-008 for a variance for the existing shed, subject to the following conditions, from 1 to 4.
Thank you Commissioner Bigger. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, I deem that passed. We will now move on to 2.3, DP 2022-015.
Thank you. This application is for an accessory dwelling with a variance to the 80% size maximum. On page 40 of the agenda package, we can see the location plan. It is west of Strathmore on township road 244. And we also have the circulation map. It was circulated to landowners within one mile. We didn't receive any responses. In our internal circulation, we had no concerns, and we did not perform an agency circulation. On pages 41, we have the site plan and an aerial photo. Proposal is to construct a second residence, including the attached garages. The new residence is proposed to be 2,455 square feet, and the existing primary residence is 2,640 square feet. So that makes a 90, it makes it 93% of the size of the primary. And it is only supposed to be 80% of the size. So the proposal meets all the setbacks in the district, and the land use bylaw calculates the size of the dwellings based on the total area, including all floors, enclosed decks, additions, and attached garages. If the variance is not approved, the applicant is open to some alternative options, such as enlarging the existing garage in the primary dwelling, or constructing the garage as a detached garage on the accessory dwelling. And I have prepared alternate conditions if MPC chooses either of these options. Staff will present the alternate conditions. So some considerations, on pages 41 and 42, or sorry, 42 and 43, you can see the, some photos and an illustration of the proposed dwelling. The application is a discretionary use in the country residential, and it does meet the NDP objectives. If dwelling accessory fits within the context of the area, which is primarily agricultural and residential, it meets the criteria listed in the LUB for regarding variances, as it shouldn't have an impact on surrounding landowners. No concerns were raised from the internal peer review for the circulation to surrounding landowners. Staff's recommendation is found on page 35, with the conditions as noted, staff are recommending that MPC approves DP 2022-015 with the conditions. And on page 38, we have the standard three options. Please let me know if you have questions.
Thank you Suzanne. MPC's wishes?
Can I just ask how 80% was come up? Why do we have an 80% rule for a secondary dwelling? Any particular reason?
I think when we put the dwelling accessory into this current bylaw, we did have some discussions, and just thought that one should appear kind of larger than the other, as one is a primary and one is a secondary. And we did talk about, originally, we had a maximum size of 1,200 square feet, but it seemed like people just weren't able to meet that maximum all that often, so we changed it to this percentage.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, they could also change, swap the dwellings from primary to secondary and all that, and if they wanted to do it that way too, right? Like, there's more than one way around it, you know, so.
Thank you, I just wanted for my own information.
Thank you Suzanne. MPC's wishes?
I'll put forward the motion that MPC approved DP 2022-015 for dwelling accessory with a variance subject to conditions, and there's five conditions. And I can read them if people want.
I think that you noted them should be good enough. The, thank you Commissioner Claussen. I'll call the vote, is anyone opposed? Hearing none, that is passed. We will move on to 2.4, DP 2022-017.
Thank you. This application is for a home base business type 3, a small equipment repair shop. The location plan is on page 49 of the agenda package. It is approximately one mile east of Namaka on township road 232. We also have the circulation map. We circulated to adjacent landowners within one mile. We didn't receive any comments. We also circulated to Six Sika Nation, we didn't receive any comments, and to the deputy regional fire chief. And he replied that we need to have a fire inspection completed for the business. On page 50, we have the site plan. The proposal is to operate a small equipment repair shop within an existing building on the 2.99 acre parcel. The sole employee will be a licensed heavy-duty mechanic, who's one of the two landowners who reside on the parcel. And the hours are proposed to be 8 a.m. to 4 p.m., Mondays to Fridays. There is no noise anticipated, as all the activity will be within the existing insulated building. On page 51, you can see that it is just within the Eagle Lake ASP area. And on page 52, we have a photo of the existing shop and an aerial photo. Some considerations, the HVB meets the criteria of the MDP and the LUB for home-based business. The proposal will not have a negative environmental impact on Eagle Lake, so it meets the requirements of the Eagle Lake ASP. Outdoor storage area is screened from the road, and there is adequate parking on site. There were no circulation responses from adjacent landowners or Six Sika Nation, and a condition has been added for building code and further inspection. On pages 44 and 45, staff have provided, staff are recommending approval of this application with the conditions as noted, and the standard three options are found on page 47. Please let me know if you have questions.
Thank you Suzanne. MPC's wishes?
A member link here, I will move that Municipal Planning Commission approves development permit 2022-017 for a home-based business type 3, subject to the conditions in the recommendation.
Discussions, Commissioner Kester?
Just a question, is there any concern about staff being fixed or not fixed, or waiting in queue outside of the building? Are there going to be like a storage area out there, or are there only one thing allowed there, they come, drop it off, haul it in the shed, fix it, get rid of it before they pull? My concern is, you know what happens?
Would you like me to address, leave Kester's comment?
Yes, please.
So the applicant has stated that they don't expect this to be an issue, that this type of equipment that's being dropped off is what they're hoping for, is just small engine repair related to maybe some of the nurseries in the surrounding area and acreages. So they didn't anticipate that a lot of outdoor storage would be required, but they have provided a small storage area in the back.
Okay, and I guess it's just for a two-year time, they can, that does become a problem, they can address it in two years from now too.
Okay, Commissioner Link has, has made a motion. I'll call that motion to vote. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that is passed. We will move on to 2.5. We will move on to 2.5, which is DP 2022-019.
This application is for a dwelling accessory for a second residence, which was originally a temporary dwelling. On page 69, we have the location map and you can see it is southwest of Namaika, about 3.5 miles southwest of Namaika. The circulation area was completed within one mile and that is also on page 59. We didn't receive any responses from surrounding landowners. The internal circulation, we had no concerns and we did not perform a circulation to any agencies. On pages 60 and 61, you can see some aerial photos and site plan. Land use bylaws previous to the current one did not allow a second permanent residence unless you had 80 acres or greater, except for in certain situations, which was like for compassionate care or farm health. So in this landowner situation, they had applied for a temporary permit in 1998 and had received multiple renewals until 2015, when the permit expired and had not been renewed. So they're applying now to allow this small home to be a second permanent residence as the bylaw allows for that now. The proposed dwelling accessory, it does not meet the land use bylaw requirement for that 80% size ratio because it's the larger of the two. However, the bylaw does allow an exemption for the existing temporary dwelling if it was on site prior to the date of the adoption of the current land use bylaw, or there had been no complaints from adjacent residents, or the dwelling has been well maintained and repaired as required. We have photos of the dwelling on page 62. Some considerations, the proposed application is a discretionary use and meets the MDP objective. The proposed dwelling accessory fits the context of the area, which is agricultural and residential. It meets the exemption criteria listed in the land use bylaw. It does appear to be well maintained. No concerns were raised from the internal peer review or circulation to surrounding landowners. Page 57, staff's recommendation is that MPC approves this application for a dwelling accessory, subject to the conditions provided, and the standard three options are found on page 57. Thank you.
Thank you Suzanne. MPC's wishes?
I'll move that MPC approved DP 2022-019 for a dwelling accessory, subject to the following conditions from 1 to 4.
Thank you Commissioner Bigger. Any discussion? I'll call the vote. Anyone opposed? Hearing done, passed. We will move on to 2.6, DP 2022-20.
Thank you. This is the final development from the application for today. It's a variance request for an existing shed and existing grain bin. The location plan is on page 69 and it is approximately 12 miles southeast of Rosebud on Range Road 205. Also on page 69, we have the circulation map. Circulated to surrounding landowners within one mile. We didn't receive any responses. Our internal peer review, there were no concerns. Deputy Regional Fire Chief had no concerns from the fire perspective as the locations, these structures don't impact the dwelling. On page 70, we have the portion of the RPR, real property report. A letter of compliance is requested to review identified an existing shed and several granaries which do not meet the required setback. Shed is approximately, well, the shed is 1.40 meters from the existing quonset and the distance between the existing granary varies between 0.62 and 1.20 meters. The required setback is 1.52 meters. The granaries do not require development permit unless we need a variance for some reason, which they do. Considerations, on page 70, we have an aerial photo which has the circles where these are on the aerial photo. Proposal meets the criteria listed in the LUB regarding variances, as it should not have a negative impact on surrounding landowners or the amenities of the neighborhood. No concerns were raised from surrounding landowners or from the internal peer review as the structures meet the distance to the county road right of ways and are not near any residences. The conclusion on pages 64 and 65 is that MPC approves DP 2022-020 for the variance for the distance between the shed and the quonset and the multiple granaries, subject to the conditions as noted. And on page 67 is the standard three options. Thank you, let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you Suzanne. MPC's wishes? Yes, Commissioner Larson?
I'll recommend that MPC approved DP 2022-020 with a variance for the distance between an existing shed and quonset and the distance between multiple granaries, subject to the following conditions from 1 through 6.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing done, I'll call the vote. Anyone opposed? Hearing no opposition, that is passed. I think that takes care of everything. I adjourned, sorry, sorry, Commissioner Kestner.
Yeah, I know, we're redoing our plan and the five feet between granaries. I think we can look at that. There's very few granaries in the country or roads are, meet that standard. And I don't know what the rationale of it is. It doesn't make much sense. And even between quonsets and accessory buildings, I know there's fire things and stuffs, but it depends on the shed too. So yeah, if you, if you could look at that.
Yes, excellent highlight there and you know, that relates to the development permit that we just looked at, obviously, right? And looking at those in-between spaces and actually, as a matter of fact, we did have a meeting yesterday about that. So planning staff have noted it and they will be looking at that. Yeah, thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, MPC is adjourned. Thank you everybody. Thank you Suzanne. Good work.